Good evening, welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, September 24. We're starting tonight at 8:30 instead of 8:00. That's the way it was noticed for any of you who are looking in at 8:00. I apologize for that. The reason we started at 8:30 is that we began tonight at 7 o'clock with a work session with representatives from the Toll Brothers Development Company. Toll Brothers is currently contract vendee, which means that they have entered into a contract to buy what we have often called the Baker Property Site, which is the campus office building site that's on the right-hand side of Washington Avenue as you head out of the village towards Chappaqua. That site has been empty for the last couple of years and has been on the market by its current owners, a company called Bennison Equities. They are currently in contract with a proposed sale of that property to Toll Brothers. And Toll visited tonight with representatives from their team to describe to us in an initial way the notion of a residential development of roughly 70 townhouse units that they would propose to build on that site. I caution you that everything they said tonight is in the category of a schematic review. They have not made a formal proposal yet, and at the point at which they do make a formal proposal, there will be several steps involved, including the review of a zoning change, since the site is currently zoned only for campus office development. And at the point at which they make a formal proposal, we will make sure that that information is publicly available to anybody and everybody who's interested. There'll be plenty of opportunity to weigh in with any comments or concerns anybody might have. But what I would certainly say at the outset is Toll makes an impressive presentation, and it's certainly accompanied with a long history of success. And although we may disagree at various points about the process, and the result of it is uncertain, there is no doubt that it is very good news for the Village of Pleasantville to have a firm like Toll interested in a significant residential development in our community. And it's also good news that a property that has been vacant for the last couple of years is now the subject of a potentially significant development. So, as reported, we'll know more in the next probably 60 days from Toll about how they want to proceed, and at the point at which we have a formal application, we will make sure everybody in the community is aware of it. Anybody who is interested in calling in with comments or questions tonight's meeting, the caller number is 769-1677. Our next regular meeting is two weeks from now, Monday, October 8 at 8:00 p.m. Back to our regular 8:00 p.m. time with a work session at 7:00. I had a few announcements to make, one of which is kind of fun, and that is that some folks from our recycling committee and our conservation advisory committee have gotten together with the idea of a Halloween costume swap. So on Saturday, October 6, 13, and 20, three consecutive Saturdays, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., people will gather at the gazebo at Memorial Plaza, that's during the hours of the farm market, and you can bring along old Halloween costumes and donate them for the taking, and pick up new Halloween costumes, ones that might be of interest for you and your kids. I talked to Helen Muir and Christine O'Grislow, those are two of the key players in all of this, and they report that if you don't have one to donate, that's fine. The whole purpose of this is to sort of recycle Halloween costumes, because God knows you can't be Harry Potter two years in a row, right? So, Halloween costume swap, October 6, 13, and 20. Congratulations to all of them. And Christine amusingly found out that October 13, the middle of the three days, is National Halloween Costume Swap Day. So Pleasantville, it turns out, is right in the swing of things. So, great opportunity.
That's a big holiday. I think schools are off that day.
Yeah. I think the CSA wants the day off.
All right. So, that's great news.
Halloween swap.
Couple of other things to report. The Pace University Cultural Organizers have worked out a great opportunity for people to see, there are two performances of Shakespeare's Hamlet performed by British actors from the famous Globe Theatre. There are performances on Saturday, September 29 at 4:00 p.m. and Sunday, September 30 at 3:00 p.m. So that's this weekend, Saturday at 4:00 p.m. or Sunday at 3:00. It's going to take place at the Pace Pleasantville Campus, located on the lawn between the Miller Building and the lake. It is free. Theater goers are encouraged to bring picnics, blankets, and beach chairs. The event goes on rain or shine. For additional information, you can call 212-346-1715, or visit schimmel.pace.edu. That's S-C-H-I-M-M-E-L dot pace dot edu. So Shane, I don't know if you can zero in on that, but Shakespeare's Hamlet, taking place two performances this weekend, absolutely free at Pace Pleasantville. So, interesting thing, interesting opportunity. Our friends at Metro North have let us and everybody else know some interesting good news, and that is that beginning on October 14, they are going to have the largest service expansion since their inception in 1983, adding more weekend and more off-peak service. So you can see the additional weekend and off-peak service on the new schedules that take place October 14. And you can also find out more on the web at mta.info/mnr. You may have heard, I think we passed a resolution at a previous meeting, the Chamber of Commerce is organizing sidewalk sales days in downtown Pleasantville, and they're going to take place on Friday, October 12, and Saturday, October 13. So that will be a great opportunity to get yourself down to the Village of Pleasantville and take advantage of the sidewalk sale days. The Park on Patch program is going to happen, Patty?
On Saturday.
On Saturday, October 13, Patch Media, which is a member of the Pleasantville Chamber of Commerce, is sponsoring the Park on Patch program, and they are paying for metered parking on Washington and Wheeler Avenue with a green and white patch bag between 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. So when you come down to take advantage of the sales, you can also take advantage of the free parking available.
Time limits still apply.
Time limits still apply. And I also would like to call your attention to the Pleasantville Recycles Newsletter. If you haven't signed up to get the Pleasantville Recycles Newsletter, you can do so at their website, pleasantvillerecycles.org. All kinds of interesting stuff, including this month information about the aforementioned Halloween costume swap, about mulching instead of raking your leaves, and about the new possibilities of upcycling, which is a national recycling system for wastes that were previously not recyclable or hard to recycle. So all kinds of interesting information available. You can get it on their website, and you can also sign up on their website to get the newsletter and have that coming your way automatically. Anybody else have anything?
Well, the big announcement tonight, we have to pay homage to our outgoing examiner representative, Sam Barron.
Exactly right. Sam Barron has been the reporter on the Pleasantville Beat for the Examiner since when, Sam?
March of 2008.
Since March of 2008. Sam is a Pleasantville-bred reporter and is now headed to the Westchester Business Journal. So Sam has been probably at as many meetings as most of us, so...
Do you want to come up and say a few words, Sam, of departure? I think that you should.
All right, welcome. Sam Barron, Pleasantville Examiner.
Yeah, we're going to miss you. And we should note that his new job requires him to...
Different attire?
Yes. Wear different attire.
You know, I've known Sam since he was five years old, and he was dressed just like the...
Yes.
In fact, maybe that t-shirt, I don't know.
Yeah, I think I had the same Canucks shirt when I was five years old, too.
I have known you since you were five years old.
So are you going to report on yourself on your own speech right now?
Yes, that's going to be actually the top story in tomorrow's newspaper. I think you guys are going to miss the revenue I brought in from parking tickets the most. But no, I want to thank the Pleasantville Village Board, and I want to thank the people of Pleasantville for making my job a lot, a lot easier, and for always being open and accessible. And I think the people of Pleasantville are very, very lucky to have a Village Board that's so open, that's so honest, a little too honest sometimes, but that's good.
Exactly when do you meet, Mr. Barron?
But yeah, thank you guys, thank you guys again, and I'm definitely, and I look to be reporting on a lot of the Pleasantville projects when I'm at the Business Journal, like MLA and the Toll Brothers and...
Right, I was about to say, we hope to have plenty of reason for you to be here reporting.
And yeah, you're going to have to. If you walk in, you know, dressed as, you know, in different attire, you may have to say who you are.
Yeah, I might have to show ID or...
Yeah, you may have to say, you know, "It's me, Sam."
Will you write a tell-all now, now that you're leaving?
Oh, yeah.
Sort of an expose of what really goes on.
Pleasantville, is it really so pleasant?
Exactly.
Well, we will need to tell you.
I'll miss you guys, too.
We really...
Thank you. And to Patty, go Braves.
I know, I know. There's hope for you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
How will she be a Braves fan when she's a Met fan? I, that's like an oxymoron, you know? I think that she's only done that to be, you know, continual.
Well, I think she likes it when I come and do my tomahawk job, especially after we beat the Phillies this weekend.
Well, I don't know who I'm going to talk to about sports. You did promise to call me and talk some sports with me every now and then.
It's with the way the Saints are playing, they're going to be long phone calls.
Yeah, yeah, that's unfortunate.
Well, Sam, thank you for your attentiveness.
Thank you.
We won't thank you for the occasional jabs you delivered in our way, but that's the beauty of a free press, and we're glad to have you.
I do not write the editorials as a disclaimer.
Sam, we'll just come from the paper now. Do you have somebody?
I'm not 100% sure. I've heard some names, but I don't want to say it's not...
All right, we'll have Martin or someone give me a call, Adam or Martin.
We'll do.
We're here, so we appreciate all your...
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
We missed you terribly, Sam.
Worth noting that, you know, the rise of local media, the Examiner, the Patch, the Daily Voice have created new avenues for people to find out what's going on that didn't exist a few years back, and that has been a great thing for the Village of Pleasantville, as well as for lots of other communities, so...
I have a couple of things.
Go ahead.
The first is regarding the library. The library's continuing to do some work, and there's going to be a crane, some crane work, which is going to close the library parking lot and the library probably on Wednesday if weather holds, so we wanted to let everybody know that.
Is there school that day, or are they closed?
No.
They're closed.
No school. So the hope is that that will all work out all right, and that the weather will hold. So that's set again for this Wednesday, September 26. The other thing I wanted to mention is the Pleasantville Rec Center partnered with the library to roll out an after-school club, which is open to grades five and six. They're going to have after-school sessions from 3:00 to 5:00, Monday through Thursday. They're going to have it in sort of eight-week shifts, and they're hoping to attract lots of registrants. If you're interested in that, you can call the Rec Center, which is located here in Village Hall on the third floor. It starts October 1. I'd also like to mention that the Village Board is starting to work on upgrading our website, and we would love to hear from anybody on things that you would like to see. We're also working on restarting our newsletter, and we would also love to hear from you on what it is that you'd like to hear from us. And the last thing I wanted to mention is really just a reminder, and that is, there is a regulation in our town that does not allow dogs in our public parks. And I just want to reiterate that to everyone and explain to them that it is not because Pleasantville doesn't welcome dogs, we actually have a dog park where people can bring them. But, you know, dogs are restricted from being at the parks because we have children who are afraid of dogs, we have people who are allergic to dogs, and we need to respect the fact that that regulation exists. There was an incident at the parks this weekend, and when asked, the individual with the dog really didn't want to leave the park, which then developed into a bigger issue. So we just want to ask if everyone could respect that, if you want to let your dog run, that dog park is open and beautiful to have it, but we ask that you respect everyone's rights when it comes to our public parks.
Is that true? Dogs aren't allowed at the parks?
I think off the leash, they have to be leached.
Because at Nannahagan, there's actually, we furnish dog waste...
It's Curb Your Dog?
Well, I should say, I'm sorry, I should say, it's the fields where we have, excuse me, the parks where we have fields.
The athletic fields.
So that's Soldiers and Sailors, Roselle, and Parkway. So I'm sorry, you're correct about Nannahagan. And there are signs posted about the dogs.
Right.
But I think we just need to be aware that there are issues that come up, and that regulation exists for a reason, and that we need to respect that. So, but I do apologize, you're correct about Nannahagan. And that's it.
Sounds good. Anybody else? So we, that being said, we'll move to the resolutions. Colleen, number 173.
Resolve that pre-check register dated September 24, 2012, covering check numbers 73389 and 73489 through 73579 have been reviewed, and they are hereby approved as listed below in categories including the General Fund, the Special Purpose Fund, the Water Fund, the Capital Fund, the Refuge Fund, the Pool Fund, and the Trust and Agency Fund, a total of $314,380.40.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. Mindy?
Resolve that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, September 10, 2012, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections? This was the meeting I was absent for, but let me add my voice to the other four of you in welcoming our new police officer, Morgan Dillon, to the Village of Pleasantville. So you will see her out on the street, and indeed, she's been out already. Very good news. So all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts anonymous donations in the amount of $25,000, $100,000, and $100 towards Clinton Street Center, or Clinton Street Senior Citizen Program, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those of you who watch regularly know that we have this resolution frequently. Our senior programs under the distinguished leadership of Virginia Pankotti continue to develop all kinds of support from people who want to help in all kinds of ways. So thank you to these three anonymous donors. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 176, Colleen.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village attorney to proceed with the settlement of certiorari petition for 14 Tompkins Avenue, Section 106.6, Block 5, Block 57 as follows. These cover the year 2009, assessment of $358,700, results in a refund of $13,401.85. Tax year 2010, original assessment, $358,700, excuse me, results in a refund of $15,248.49. Tax year 2011, original assessment of $358,700, results in a refund of $14,926.20. And for 2012, assessment again, $358,700, refund of $15,354.26. And further resolve that the village treasurer is authorized to issue the applicable refunds in the amount of $58,930.80 to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of an executed order from the court.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is an agreement that was discussed at some length in an executive session with our attorneys and is backed up by an extended memo from our attorneys. We confront, as those of you who listen to our meeting on a regular basis, situations of this kind with increasing alarming frequency lately, given the recent state of the commercial real estate economy. So we, I think, are convinced that this is the step we have to take, difficult though it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Mindy?
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Philip Platts as assessor to the unexpired terms of James Timmings at a salary of $3,000 per month effective October 1, 2012 through April 1, 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe Mr. Platts's background?
I'd be happy to. Phil Platts currently serves the town of Newcastle as its sole assessor on a full-time basis. He is available to work with us as a per diem assessor, which is basically what our position requires at this point in time. Mr. Platts has over 20 years' experience in the field of real property tax assessment, five with the second-largest town in Westchester County, that being the town of Cortland, and then two with the neighboring town of Newcastle. He has an extensive resume. He's also a real estate attorney. I've met with him on several occasions. The board had the opportunity to meet with him as well. I have completed all his reference checks, and I'm delighted to have him join our team and work with us as assessor through the unexpired term, which will be through the 1st Monday in April of 2013.
Echo what Patty has said, add to that that among his long list of credentials, he served as the president of the Westchester County Assessor Association for the year 2011.
Right, and he has consulted with his town council in Newcastle, and they are, they have no objections to him serving us as well, so...
So we look forward to significant improvements in the Village Assessor's office in its operations and also its responsiveness to the community. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 178.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Michael Newman as a recreation attendant on a per diem basis effective September 17, 2012, at a rate of $20 bucks.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Welcome, Michael. 179.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to sign drainage easement agreements with 40 Leland Avenue and 50 Leland Avenue residents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, do you want to describe this?
I'd be happy to.
You have many hours in on it.
Something I'd rather forget than remember.
As would be the case, I'm sure, for everybody, including the homeowners.
Well, we had a lot of discussion with the owners of both 40 and 50 Leland Avenue about the need to establish some storm drainage systems across their properties in order to carry water off of Leland Avenue to a point of discharge closer to the stream on the Nannahagan stream. And we've come to agreement with both property owners to allow us to acquire easements across their property in order to channel storm water effectively off of Leland Avenue and off of part of Willis at no cost to the village with respect to acquiring those easements, but with a shared cost between the village and the homeowners with respect to the installation of the drains. So we had claims from one particular property owner about the existence of storm drainage on their property, being what they thought was public storm drainage systems on their property, and they asked us to, they asked us to address that, and this is a compromise in the settlement of those claims where they felt that there was some encroachments on their property. So this agreement will be between the village and the Diarcos and the village and the Ripstein families. We've had council review these agreements, and right now, they are currently being reviewed by the parties that I had mentioned. What will happen here is that the village will effectively acquire easements and install a 24-inch storm sewer system across the rear premises of 40 and 50 Leland Avenue and convey storm water through a public storm sewer thereafter.
Thank you, Patty.
It's complicated, but I think I got the gist of it.
A complicated process and one that obviously affects individuals' private property, and that is a stressful venture to go through the negotiation that we've had to go through. And so recognizing that everybody had to represent the interests they had, I want to thank all the parties for coming to, I think, a reasonable compromise that will protect the private property owner's interests, protect the community's interests, and leave the world a little better and a little clearer than it was before we did it. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 180.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the permit renewal for food service establishment for the Clinton Street Center for lunch programs.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 181.
I'll just read the resolution. Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby establishes the following standard workday for the following employees, and will report those these days' work to the New York State and local employees' retirement system based on a timekeeping system or a record of activities maintained and submitted to the village clerk by the following employees. The mayor, standard workday is six hours per day. You following that, Mr. Mayor?
I am, yes.
Village clerk, seven. Treasurer, seven. Deputy treasurer, seven hours.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 182.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the justice court clerk to submit a grant application to the New York State Office of Court Administration for office equipment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, any specific equipment we're seeking here?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with Stephanie's request, but it's usually small. Usually the state has available copy machines and printers and the like. I think it is for the copy machine this time around. That one in the back there just kind of finally gave up on us.
Size of a small city bus. I might add that the copier we're referring to was actually donated to the village...
It was, and it's lasted a long time.
...by John, known as Law Firm back when he was mayor, so...
Following this last resolution, if we can open just up, we have a couple of phone calls that would like to address the board.
Okay, fine. All in favor of 182?
Aye.
Motion approved. Our last resolution, 183.
Is that me?
Yes.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Hayes Hill residents to hold a block party on Sunday, September 30, 2012, from 12:30 p.m. to 5:30 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a great time this weekend on Hayes Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. All right, the callers.
The caller said that they would call back at the last presentations.
Okay, feel free to call back. We'd be happy to entertain your call. Let me also remind everybody that as we are now approaching leaf season, our village, Parks and DPW people undertook a mulching-in-place policy last year, so instead of raking and bagging and disposing of leaves in piles, we have mulched them in place, and I think it worked out pretty well for us last year, and we intend to do the same again. And we encourage residents to do the same. I had a long chat today with Helen Muir, the chair of our Conservation Advisory Committee, and she suggested, Patty, and you'll hear from her on this, the notion that some of the people that are involved in the mulching program at the county are available to make a presentation and could come to a televised meeting and do that. Just to sort of remind everybody, not only of the immediate benefits to their own yard of doing that, but also the environmental benefits of avoiding all that stuff getting collected and taken to a central place. Is the caller there wanting to call back? We await your call. Otherwise, we are soon... Ah, there we go.
Michelle? Yeah, okay, yeah, we'll put you on speakerphone. Hold on. What's this one, like the orange one?
Orange button, Mindy?
Orange button.
Not sugar? Just hang, put, yeah, it's...
That should be it.
It's not, Michelle?
Good evening, it's Michelle Lucci.
Hey, Michelle.
386 Bedford Road. My first question this evening to the mayor and to the board is if we can have an idea of what the Toll Brothers concept is for Washington Avenue property, since I think there was a work session this evening, so I realize you can only divulge so much, but I was very curious to know what their concept is, their vision for that property.
Yeah, I'm happy to tell you, roughly speaking, I'm happy to tell you, roughly speaking, what they presented. I will say that I asked them specifically, you know, as soon as they feel that they have come up with a proposal that is, you know, within shouting distance of what they intend to propose, please make it available, and we'll get it on the website and all of that. What they showed us tonight, which is purely schematic and which is not yet a formal proposal, was a proposal for fee-simple townhouses. That is, they'd be owned as single-family homes, not as condominiums. They proposed, again in rough draft, a total of 73 units that would be in townhouse clusters of, I guess, three, four, five units, something like that, that they would vary in size and vary in format, with something like half or so of the units probably proposed to be what they call, I'll figure what term they use, but they would have a master bedroom suite on the main floor with the living floor, because they find that arrangement is popular with people who are, whatever, moving out of the house, looking for a property that would allow them to live comfortably even as they get older and are looking to have fewer stairs, so...
So they're not looking for any type of age restriction as far as the development proceedings?
They are not at the moment talking about an age restriction, no.
Okay, my other question is, the road that runs through Campus Drive and kind of, you know, snakes down to Washington, are they looking to open that up as a thoroughfare?
That is not what they are talking about at the moment.
Is that a paper road?
That road is owned by Bennison Equities, and it has been the subject of some dis- That road is owned by Bennison Equities, and it has been the subject of some discussion recently between the various neighbors in the area vis-à-vis whether access would be permitted, and also because of some discussion about the problems with drainage in that area. It looks as though those problems are headed toward resolution, and certainly, a potential redevelopment of the site would help with that. But what we saw tonight, again in rough draft, which may change in minor or major ways by the time we get a formal proposal, but what we saw tonight had an entrance to this townhouse development in approximately the location of that current roadway.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand who you said owned that road. Was that the entity that's selling the property?
Bennison, it is not a village road. Pardon, it's not a village road, it's current... Toll Brothers doesn't own the site at the moment?
I know. I'm just saying that road, who controls that road?
Bennison Equities, which is the owner of the office complex.
She's talking at the same time you are.
Bennison Equities, the owner of the office complex, controls that road.
Okay, okay. All right, well, I guess we'll stay posted for all of that future information. I mean, it's very encouraging that Toll Brothers, which you know is a very well-regarded and successful developer, is looking in our community for this type of project.
Certainly is. You know, obviously, there are lots of discussions to be had down the road, but it is good news that a property that's currently vacant and unused is the subject of that kind of interest.
Right, ratables, which is what we need.
Yes, we do.
My other comment is in reference to Colleen Wagner's remarks about dogs and parks, and I realize that, you know, she was referring to village property. But also, it's very important that people understand that their dogs are also not welcome on the school district's campuses. And we see this quite frequently with people bringing dogs, you know, to the school for pickup or drop-off, and that also is not acceptable for all the same reasons that Colleen noted, you know, for prohibiting dogs at our village parks. So I want to make a note of that. And then my third issue is, does anyone want to guess?
Oh, tell us.
Well, I'm calling because of the same old issue. Can anybody guess now?
Truck traffic on Bedford Road.
I'm just really totally, I want to say speechless, but that wouldn't be me. What is going on with prohibiting truck traffic on Bedford Road? I can't imagine that you're not really tired of hearing me call in, and I can't imagine why our police department is not able to end this problem or correct it or curtail it or do something. So really, I'd like to know, why is there, like, a total paralysis in correcting this problem?
Well, let me tell you publicly what I've told you privately, and that is that to describe total paralysis in correcting this problem is unfair and unreasonable. We have a small police department. We do not have someone permanently detailed to be addressing your specific concerns. Obviously, we don't want to allow trucks of greater than five tons on Bedford Road. It's against the law. It is signed to that effect. We have specific details with officers tasked to enforce that at various points in the day, and we have been successful in writing quite a number of tickets. But we can't do it 24 hours a day, and we can't have someone lurking in the bushes to catch every truck that comes by.
Well, I'm not asking for any of those things to happen. What I'm asking for is a consistent patrol and ticketing of what is a consistent violation of this issue.
Michelle, I believe...
Which are 18-wheelers, which are by-room concrete trucks, the Cisco tractor-trailer truck that everyone is kind of amazed that we have that large of a vehicle coming into the village. But it's very simple. They go and they deliver to the diner. So perhaps there could be an outreach to the owner of the diner to let their driver know that every time they bring them their supplies, they're barreling down a road that they should not be driving on.
Okay, well, Michelle.
And the other thing that's really quite simple is the early morning truck traffic, which I have repeatedly called to bring attention to, is anywhere from 6:30 in the morning to 6:45, there can be a vehicle parked at any side street, anywhere on Bedford Road from, you know, from Memorial Plaza to the Old Village at Michael's Tavern, and you'll find an illegal tractor-trailer truck driving on that road.
Okay, your comments have been noted. As I have mentioned, I think we are responding in a reasonable and appropriate way. I thank you. Any other points?
Well, yeah, my point is that I totally disagree with your point.
That's fine, feel free. It's a free country.
And my...
Michelle, do you have any other points?
Judge Curly indicated that there could be an issue with the signage in the village...
I've had a conversation with Judge Curly.
...from, you know, collecting fines and finding these drivers guilty of what they're doing. So what has been, you know, what's been done in that regard as far as the signage?
I've had a conversation with Judge Curly. I believe that there was only one situation in which the signing was at issue when the matter was adjudicated. We will address it. Do you have any further points?
I've got to clean this up.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your call.
Thank you, Peter.
Anybody else have anything to add to the mix? So there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you all. Our next regular meeting, Monday, October 8. Get ready for the Halloween costume swap. Thank you.